I could have done it, I could have done it 1800.
1801.
Nope, I'm out.
1802.
No.
1803.
All right. All right, good evening. Today's January 13th, 2025. Today's regular legislative meeting on Barbourton City Council. Before we begin our regular legislative meeting, we do have individual committee meetings on the agenda today. Before we begin, just a short, real quick update. City Council has voted and Mr. Easterling, Councilman Easterling Dallas Warren, this evening at 5:30 PM. And he will be taking a war two spot. So if you see a new face, that is he. So for the committee meetings, we're going to start with City Properties, Parks and Recreation. That is Mr. Easterling's committee, however, him being new, and this is a legislative meeting. I've asked that Ms. Gerhart take the reins today and today only and give Mr. Easterling some time to acclimate to the position. So Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the City Properties, Parks and Recreation Committee to order. Today is Monday, January 13th. The time is 6:02 PM and we are in council chambers. Members of this committee are present, including myself as co-chair, Mr. Easterling as chair, Mrs. Hager and President Greer. All their council members are here with the exception of Mr. Heidick and others noted on my sheet. Tonight, we have one request for legislation, a letter from Mr. Michael Tiaideki P.E. requesting legislation to enter into contract with Kiko to hold an auction to sell items remaining in 107 Fifth Street Building before demolition. Emergency wording is requested. I believe we all saw this in our email, but did anybody have a chance to read this? And does anybody have any questions? Mr. President?
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
I'm familiar with the company that, this company, right, they're pretty large, they do a lot of auctions. I was curious of, like, what does the contract look like? Because there wasn't a contract with this. What does it look like? Is there like a royalty or a fee? How is that, they take a cut?
Mr. Tiaideki explained that a little on email, but since he's with us this evening, I'm going to ask him to explain more.
Thank you.
Over to you, Mr. Tiaideki.
Sure. They have, it's about $2,000 to $2,500. And what that covers is advertising. They set up their site, they come out with people to put items in lots, take pictures, get descriptions, and they set up everything on their end to do an auction. This site in particular lends itself, according to them, better for online auction type setup in their world, which can then reach much further than folks that would show up on a daily basis for this auction. So they'll hope like one day for an open house between certain hours for people to actually view the items if they'd like to. They would bring in people, they would help run it, they would help with us to make sure people are safe in the building. We'll quarantine off areas that we don't want them into and areas that auctionable items are in. So that $2,500 sets all that up with the labor to run the auction and everything. And then they take a structured basis of depending upon how much things sell for, the higher the dollar amount, the lower percentage it would be, lower dollar amounts just because of the effort it goes into, they charge a percentage. And it was, I don't think there was anything even in the smallest item that was like 15% or more. So it's a pretty low tiered item of what they get for the commission only if things sell.
Thank you, Mr. Tiaideki. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Co-chair.
Does anyone else on council have any questions? Mrs. Beck?
Me too. So, Mr. Tiaideki, you said in your email that some items have already been taken out. What has been taken out? What do we got? What are we keeping?
So during the process, when we went to the design review board, some of the comments, which before they voted, we promised for some mitigation, was some really cool items that were in there that we would take out, salvage and work into the new building. So we did a walk with members of the design review board, planning, we took Hassan Staub, the architect, in the building, and we walked through and tagged like hundreds of items. Clearly, hundreds of items all can't be removed and worked into the new Justice Center. So we went into conjunction with some of the stronger ideas, things that were easily removed that could be salvaged. And a lot of them were white fixtures. We got the benches that were up in the top part that could be used in the courts for holding area benches and lattice work that was in the upper part that was really cool that we can reuse in some of the areas. So I'm working right now with the next part of the design phase with Hassan Staub with exactly how those items and maybe a few additional items could be reworked into the new Justice Center in City Hall.
So they haven't been taken out yet or they already?
A lot of the items, we worked with Lee and we were able to take them out, carefully box them, and we put them in a safe spot to be reused.
Okay. Let's see. I have a couple more. You did answer a few. Oh, what's the target date for this auction?
Soon. For the next, I don't have an exact date, but within the next month, hopefully less than two months, we'll be ready. So we're at that point where we'd like to get legislation, work with them on the contract, start taking pictures and then, and only then, once we know how long it takes them to get here and organize our auction, will we advertise with the exact date of it.
Got you. And it sounds like you're saying that Kiko will be the one removing these items rather than somebody that works for the city or something like that?
I don't understand the question.
Like, taking, like, removing the items that are going to go in the auction, boxing them up and things like that. Kiko was going to be doing all that handling?
They'll be coordinating with us to handle all of that, yes.
Okay.
Oh, and there will be some additional items that we've identified that can't happen until the building is demolished. And that's some of the bigger keystone pieces and some of the things which we can't safely remove with, you know, smaller equipment. So we're going to postpone some of the larger items that are, you know, ordered in place to remove and reuse into some of the stepping stones and benches and stuff like that in and around the building.
Thank you. Any other questions from council on that? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have no pending legislation for miscellaneous discussion. I attended Parks and Rec last Thursday, so I was just going to go over, they did some yearly updates. The St. Augustine's, that corner?
Saint.
St. Augustine's, maybe?
Augustine, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm not as familiar with some of the churches. What's that corner, Monty? The streets?
Sixth and Westlake.
So over there at Sixth and Westlake, they're going to be really cleaning out the azalea bushes. So it might look like they were cut down to nothing this year, but that's because they haven't been cut down in a long time. So if anybody's concerned, you can let them know they're going to bloom next year. They might put in sun patients because those did really well before. They have about 275 to 315 active adults with memberships. Their shooting pool is very popular there and the workout center is taking off. Major perks that were worked on, let's see, McCafferty, there was a building torn down last Monday. The pickleball fencing has all been fixed up and they made it so your balls don't roll underneath it. They got a new tree for the gazebo, College Parks, there was new benches and more stuff coming. At Lake Anna, Habitat for Humanity donated the paint and time to paint the trash cans. So those all look nice. I haven't been over there lately to see them. We were awarded a million dollars in grant money for improvements at Lake Anna. And at the last meeting, they were looking at like a $3 million project. So they're going to look for fundraising. And Mr. Peter Patterson is going to be looking at when we have to have that money spent by. They fixed the infield mix at the ball field, so now it's safe to slide into home. The concession stand will be up and running this year. The security cameras are all complete. They are looking for a way to make them kind of like live so that the fire department and police department can monitor them. And that, you know that really good newsletter we were getting from them? So more departments will be covered in that. So, yes, very good meeting. Anybody have any questions? Anybody in the gallery have anything? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:12 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart.
You're welcome.
Thank you for covering down. That reminded me of the small town minutes that I was reading in our historical books today in our safe.
By like some stranger, if I said the wrong church, I apologize for that.
All right. All right, up next is Public Welfare and Safety with Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll call the Public Welfare and Safety Committee to order. We're in council chambers. It's January 13th, 2025. Time is now 18:12 hours. All members are present, including myself as chair, Mr. Easterling as co-chair, Ms. Gerhart and Mr. Greer. All their council members are present except Mr. Heidick. All guests are noted on my sheet. We have no requests for legislation. And we have one pending legislation, which we'll be voting on tonight, and that would be to ordinance number 4-2025, enter into contract Summit County Akron Regional Radio System. An ordinance authorizing the city of Barbourton to renew the city's user agreement with the Summit County Akron Regional Radio System and declaring an emergency. Any questions? Any comments? Do I have anything from my committee? Anything? Anything from other council members? The gallery? Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 18:13 hours.
That sounded weird.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Up next is Rules, Marketing and Development with Ms. Gerhart.
We're back again, President. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the Rules, Marketing and Development Committee to order. The date is Monday, January 13th, and the time is 18:14 PM. And we are in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, including myself as chair, Mrs. Beck as co-chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Heidick is not here, and President Greer. All their council members are noted on my sheet and everyone in the gallery is noted on my sheet also. We have no new requests for legislation this evening. Pending legislation, ordinance number 1-2025 presented by me. Donation of property, 7015th Street Northwest. An ordinance allowing the city of Barbourton to accept the vacant lot at 7015th Street Northwest for Michael Seabee, the owner, as a donation and declaring an emergency. As you are all familiar, that's in one of my flood zones. So I'm assuming that we're getting it and then we're going to tear it down for water mitigation.
Yeah, there was a fire at the property a handful of months ago. I do know that Carolene Crawford, back when they received their EPA funding, they did request to purchase it at that time. They did not want to sell, but now that there was a fire, it needs to be raised, they're willing to donate.
Okay, wonderful. Did anybody have any questions on that? I know we called it out of committee last week, but just in case anybody thought of anything. Okay. Next, presented by myself and Mrs. Thompson, this is ordinance 2-2025. Enter into contract with Hoben Stop Architects. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and his, or his designate to enter into contract with Hudson Stop Architects for architectural services for schematic design for the City Hall and Justice Center project in the city of Barbourton and the cost not to exceed $104,200 and declaring an emergency. I know I had sent out some questions regarding this on Friday and the mayor called me and let me know he was calling all the members of council. Did anybody else get a call Friday and get to talk about this?
I got a call.
Mr. Harris is the only one? Okay. So he did send us an email this afternoon just explaining that there wasn't oversight and they have not asked the foundation or applied for the grant for the $100,000. So we are probably going to be talking about that this evening in finance. We also haven't put through our request that we approved for the up to $500,000 for up to 25 years. So we don't have that approval from the foundation because they don't have the request yet. Talked about, you know, if we approve requesting this from the foundation, does the money automatically initiate the architectural drawings, which this would say yes. I believe you all received my email about how the drawings work for architectural drawing. You start with conceptual, which is what we all have right now. And before you go on to schematic, you have pretty much approved those plans as well as your budget. And in light of the fact that we haven't even asked for the money yet, I don't know that we're ready for schematic drawings. What is, does anybody have thoughts on that? Or has anybody had any other conversations? Mrs. Thompson?
I think at the very least, tonight should only be the first reading for this piece of legislation. And then if we end up having to pull it because of time, obviously, I think it wouldn't be smart to pass this if we don't have the grant from the foundation.
Correct.
So that's why I'm at.
Yeah. I think until we have both, like, all the finances finalized, we wouldn't probably be going for this next set. Okay. Last on my list is ordinance 8-2025. This is where we talked about making the end of May Street kind of like a roundabout permanent vacation of an approximate 192 linear feet of May Street, starting at the Northern Parcel Line and moving south towards Coventry Road. I believe we had maps and everything else on that, and I know it's something that the BCIC has been working on. Did anybody have questions on that this week? Lori helped me by putting a copy of the rules at everybody's place. Did everybody get that? Okay. So, Mr. Easterling, you probably haven't even had a chance to read these yet. We got the big binder that you got last year and Mr. Greer and I spoke about, you kind of need to like walk through council for a long time before you can identify if you need to change any of the rules. So I'm just going to kind of go through them with you guys. And we're just going to talk about it for a few minutes. And then this is what we're going to be coming back to anytime I have committee for more thoughts and conversation. So, okay. Obviously, on the front page, we'd be updating names and dates. That's all I had for that. Next thing that caught my eye, if you could go to page six. So I know in here we were talking about if we need to call a special meeting, we have a 12-hour notice personally served. Would that still be how we would go about things in this day and age or would it be like through an email and phone call?
Does it say 12 hours?
12 hours notice. 12 hours notice.
12 hours notice to each member.
Cross-reference the charter. I believe the charter says 24.
Okay.
But we'll just, but yeah, so the way that the special notices given out, the clerk can speak on it more, but we publish with, on our website, news agencies.
AgroVigil Journal, Westside Reader and The Herald.
Correct. And we go off the 24-hour, so if it's 12, I've always went off the charter, so.
Okay.
Just make sure, we're getting that in line.
So order?
It has been told if the construction charter is.
Right.
Okay.
We could add social media to that, but that would be on the city's behalf.
I think this is like talking about how it can be, like, how to make sure that members of council know there's one happening. So do you want this? I have an extra copy.
I have one over here. I refer to it all the time.
Okay, so we could look at the charter for the hours and then update maybe how it's Next, under Rule 107, it's talking about you as the president only need to be on finance, but I know you're on all of them. Do we want to update that in our rules?
We can clarify the language if you would like to. It's just at the discretion of the presiding officer. I believe that's the term that they use in there, but we got to be, it has to be done in a way because the term presiding officer could also mean the chair of the committee. So we could say, modify the language. I wouldn't use presiding officer, I would use council president at the discretion of the council president.
Okay, moving along to page 14. So we, I believe that this rule might still just be remaining. It's the, you know, Rule 401A and then under 1 and 2. It's kind of talking about, I think, whenever you guys are all in separate rooms for your committee meetings. So it's saying that other members may be excused from council chambers and then we could decide if a full committee report is necessary. Do we just leave that alone because it's been there for a long time or do we update that since we're doing things differently now?
I'll leave that up to council. As long as it still says that there's a report, because we do need to call legislation to the floor. So we still need that part. I believe this was restructured on our last, I'd have to defer to some of Mrs. Thompson or Mr. Griffin. I think we adjusted this to change the language to outline, on our last update, like two years ago, to outline that committee reports don't need to be like very detailed, like we don't need to know miscellaneous notes, right? Calling it to the floor of the committee report, the only legal obligation in that is to report the legislation that is being called to the floor. I'll just defer to the council.
Okay. So that could be, we're just talking tonight.
Yeah.
So that could just be something you guys could think about. Okay, so then on page 16, Rule 404. At regular meetings, all motions shall be made by the chair of the committee and seconded by the member of the committee. So does that mean that I should be saying I'm going to call for it and I don't ask somebody to make that first motion? And then you just get a second? You know, like?
Clarify, yeah.
Yeah, back here when I'm like, can I have a motion to call for this? And I wait for somebody in my committee, is this saying that I'm, the committee chair should be the one that motions?
What 404 motions and motion puts?
This is during legislative.
Right, it's during the legislative process. Now, I believe I may have brought this one up.
Okay.
Regular meeting always signifies the legislative.
Yeah, so it's a, yeah.
So that, it's like when justice.
You're correct.
It's this.
You're very correct. So for clarification, clerk, remind us, the regular, when regular meetings, it's always a legislative meeting, regular meeting. So, yeah, this is what I submitted, that's been, we've been reviewing this for a year, huh?
Yeah.
So the reason behind this is, okay, I wanted to change this, that my suggestion on this rule change was to, if it comes out of rules and it goes to the floor to be voted on, I feel that the chair of that committee shouldn't be able to filibuster that vote on the floor. It's already made it to the floor, so it's open for entire council to then. That's a reason, that's not the reason I suggested that, but it just felt like a bind. Another example would be, let's say the chair is gone by our rules, if they're not here, we couldn't even, there couldn't even be a motion made according to our rules. So they just need to be maybe outlined a little different. That says like at regular legislative meeting, all motions can be made by any council member? That's just an idea.
Is that in case of absence?
What's that?
Is that in case that they are absent?
It's on the floor, I don't.
You call on that person to say.
Yeah, I don't, this is just a personal thing. I don't think that once it leaves your committee and you've already called it to the floor as a, from a committee, once it's in front of everybody, I don't feel like we should, the council should be bound to that one person.
Because we're just getting it through our committee to get to everybody.
To get to the floor. If it's on the floor, everybody's going to vote on it that night anyways. So I feel everybody should have a say on motions for that.
Okay.
I would definitely walk through that scenario as many times as you guys can think of on different scenarios to make sure it works, but I feel that it's really restricting.
Okay. This was a note, maybe like you and Taylor or you and Lori could help. What does, how does Rule 405 work? I've never seen a motion to reconsider happen yet.
We only used it one time since I've been president.
So let's, like, pretend. Like, what does it mean? How do you do it?
Okay. Yeah, so a motion to reconsider a vote, so the Rule 405, just to read it off, a motion to reconsider a vote on any question should not be in order until at least one regular meeting of city council has intervened. A motion to reconsider shall be made by a member of the party, of the prevailing side on the original vote. Meaning like if something, it could go for if it passed or not passed, right? Right, it could be a vote. So if, this is, goes for a regular legislative, anybody, right? So if we vote on something that's council, and again, it's kind of a, a little restrictive because if you suspend, if it's emergency wording, it goes into effect to begin with.
It goes into effect.
Right, so there's, the 30 days emergency wording gives us time to afterwards to kind of like reel things back in maybe, I'm sure there's some other things. But if you, like, say a piece of legislation passed or it didn't pass, I think in our case, it didn't pass. Yeah, I think it was a liquor license or something. It didn't pass. The people that voted no, if one of those people changed their vote, they can motion to reconsider, but it had to be the people that, whatever happened, right? If it was voted no down, then people, someone who voted no could motion to reconsider. But it had to be at least one regular legislative meeting later, right? Couldn't be that night, so you couldn't. Or, and it's opposite too, yes, right? A vote could, a piece of legislation could pass and then someone finds out that maybe it wasn't the best thing. One meeting later, whoever voted yes on that piece of legislation then could motion to reconsider, to pull it.
Okay.
Two weeks later.
Yeah, two weeks. Yeah, so the.
The next.
One regular legislative meeting has to.
Has to pass.
Okay.
And that's, we did it for a liquor license, but that's why I would also caution emergency wording on everything. It kind of just goes into effect already, so it'd be kind of hard to reconsider something that is in law already and maybe possibly have been taken advantage of.
Right. Yeah. Because nobody's going to lay awake at night worried that we paid the toner bill, but if there's other things that are flying through at emergency, we could, okay.
It does happen. We've had to do it one time since I was president.
Okay. We are just going to pause there at page 17 because I don't want to go too late into the evening talking about rules that are meant to be broken. evening talking about rules that are meant to be broken. No, I'm just kidding. So, is there any miscellaneous conversation for rules? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
Oh, second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:31 PM. Thank you for that conversation also, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhart.
Next up is City Utilities with Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President, City Utilities. Time is 6:32. I would like to call this meeting to order today, January 13th. We are in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, myself, his chair, Jennifer Hager, Emily Beck, and Justice Greer, and all others noted, Mr. Heidig, it's past midnight. We have no requests for legislation to call for tonight, but we do have pending legislation. Ordinance number 7, that's 2025, presented by Mrs. Beck and Mr. Griffin, titled 2025 bids and contracts, yearly requirements for materials and services. An ordinance authorizing director of public service to advertise for bids and/or enter into contracts in 2025, covering the year's requirements for materials and services used in the ordinary and daily operations of municipal departments in the city of Barberton and declaring it an emergency. We will be voting on this piece of legislation tonight. Do we have any remarks? From the council, the gallery, this piece of legislation? Hearing none, I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck, we are adjourned at 6:34, without our passes.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Last but not least, Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order. It is Monday, January 13th, 2025, 6:34 PM here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, with the exception of Mr. Heidig, who is absent. There's myself, his chair, Mr. Griffin, and President Greer. All other council members are also present, as well as guests noted on my sheet. We have a few requests for legislation this evening, the first being a request from Jamie Iceman, our Director of Public Service and Human Resources, requesting legislation to place Mark Carr at pay grade seven, step seven, for Superintendent of Streets, effective today, Monday, January 13th, 2025. Emergency wording is requested. Because this is being introduced tonight, I'm not so comfortable voting on this same night, so we are gonna vote on this next time, but I would like to have a discussion about this. I have spoken to Ms. Iceman about both this request and for the following, for the same reason, and if you wouldn't come up and kind of go over things, thank you.
Good evening. My request did come in, I did ask for a reading, to actually to vote on it this evening, introduce and vote, just due to the timing of with the season, the way this all came about. Kyle Breiding is going to, he's currently in the union, and for him to accept this position, we would need to know what the rate of pay would be before he would give up that position, because once he accepts it, then that position becomes open. And so, for him, nothing would be retroactive. So, whenever council would vote, that following Monday is when his start date would be, when he would accept it. And then as for Mark, his can go retroactive to the 13th, he did accept the position, and I am coming to you to see if we could pay him at a higher step, as we are allowed to do in the pay plan procedure. Currently, I'm allowed to pay, we, the city are allowed to go up to step six, anything above that, and that pay grade requires your approval. For Kyle's position, he is in a different pay grade, anything over a step four would require your approval.
Yes, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. I know Kyle just went up to like planning, he was kind of in planning and building, will he be in both of those and now streets, or will he be leaving planning and building to go to street?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Harris?
How long has Mr. Carr been here?
It'll be 25 years this summer.
Okay. When can we make amendments to her request?
It's up for.
You want it now, or you want it next week?
Yeah, it's up for discussion, yeah, it's gonna stay in committee.
I, I personally think, I mean, Mark has devoted 25 years of his life to our street department. I know him, I know he's very experienced at what he does. I will tell you that the morale is much better down there since he took over. I'd like to see it amended to step eight, pay grade seven. So, instead of her request at seven, I'd like to see eight for him. He's, he's been here his entire life, he's not going anywhere, obviously. I think, I think that's a good move by the city.
And he's been doing that job anyways, right?
Correct.
For a while.
He was a general foreman prior to this, and then a group leader prior to that. So, he's advanced pretty quick with everything that's occurred.
I'm open to that, Mr. Greer.
Can we break that down in layman's terms? What's step seven, step eight, what's the difference? So, we're understanding dollar amounts here?
Um, if I get this correct, maybe you can help me if I.
I will, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Because I'm just looking at a bunch of numbers.
Yeah.
So, it appears that Ms. Iceman wants to take him to, I mean, he's a pay grade seven, and to go to step seven, he would be at 84, 708. A step eights, 88. So, it would be a little over three, and a difference. But you also have to understand that he doesn't get overtime, he's on call, especially, I mean, he's in charge of snow removal, you know, getting that done for us. A whole lot more responsibilities than, you know, your group leader takes on. I mean, you're a street superintendent, you take on the street department and the parks, I guess, park maintenance, am I correct?
Yes.
That was, that was just, I was dollar figures, I was trying to figure.
Would there be any consideration for council to have a special meeting next Tuesday in order to not have that department be manned by just Mr. Carr? He's been in that capacity on his own since December 18th, it's the middle of winter. If we continue to the next legislative meeting, he will not start till February 3rd.
You're, you're speaking in regards to Mr. Breiding?
I am, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that, after the committee of the whole.
So, a special to vote on it? Is that what was asked? Or to introduce it?
To vote.
Is there a rule?
What I'm thinking is, could we go ahead with the suspension amendment, do a first reading tonight, and do a special legislative and vote next week?
Yeah.
So, we would still read it tonight, it would go through as it is, or as an amended.
So that we're not being rushed.
Be amended. And then, I would do a first reading tonight, and then we'll have committee of the whole on Monday. We will go into a special legislative meeting on Monday. A special legislative would be to handle just one, you know, this specific thing. We would vote on this, or this, plus the other one, and then adjourn, and that would get it done on the 21st.
That two, exactly.
Which is a two, so. Yeah, does that make, does that help you out too? Does that work? I mean, it can be done that way. I've got plenty of time.
Yeah.
That way, you guys wouldn't have, you wouldn't be coming in.
Separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it would just be, and committee of the halls go fast anyway, so we would just come in and read the two, vote on it, be done, and it would be effective on the 21st. For both of them, we could do both.
I would appreciate it for the department, just to, that would be great.
Yeah, and I still would like to, I know it's not possible for Kyle, but I would still like to keep the effective Monday, January 13th start date, so we can retro that pay.
Okay, now, the other question is, are you making a motion to amend it? To a different pay grade than what she's requested? Or, because I can, during a break, I'll go down and get that part, or, so I can read it the correct way, tonight.
Yeah.
It's, you don't need a motion to amend it, though? You can just change it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but what I need for, I do need, if I'm going to do first readings on both of them tonight, I need you to do all that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
But other than that, with that, we had done that before, would that work for you guys? Does that work for you?
We can move forward with that, I just need to clarify, it's legal to make sure that we can take a vote next week?
If we go in into a special legislative.
Yeah, I know specials ain't like the cure-all, though, so I just need to make sure that we, all the Ts are crossed, right?
Yeah, that works.
But if that's what you guys wanna try, I can make it happen.
I, I have one question real quick, you were talking about retro, and you said something about we could do that with Mr. Carr, but you can't do that with, with Mr. Breiding?
No, because he hasn't started the position yet, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, he wasn't going to wake up this morning until you guys said he could.
Right, right. But Mr. Carr's been doing it since December 18th.
Correct.
Or whatever it was.
Correct. But if you want to amend it, that's gonna require a motion and a vote along with all these other motions.
And since it does say effective Monday, January 13th, I'm assuming we don't need to amend anything for it to receive retro?
You have to tell me how you want it read, because it's going to go forward the way I do this. So, if you want that changed on the draft, it's also attached.
Right.
Why can't we, I mean, if it's effective Monday, January 13th, which is obviously today, can we just make a motion to amend to, from pay grade seven to, step seven to pay grade seven to step eight?
Yeah, that's, that's all there, I just wanna make sure that we can retro it, because it's a week in between, you know?
But again, don't forget to do all that regurgitating stuff, so that I can read it.
You changing the grade or the step?
Chair, can I, can I ask the reason for, if we're gonna go through with this, what's the reason for waiting a week?
I know, I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with invoking all the rules and voting on a piece of legislation that's introduced the same day. Unless it's like a true emergency, like if we need, you know, funds for.
I agree.
You know, whatever, so.
Okay, understood.
I appreciate it.
We'll make it happen.
Okay, so, that being said, to have a first reading on this tonight, I need to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 302, the 10-day rule, can I please have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, in a second.
A second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, also need to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 304, not on the agenda. Can I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion for that.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and lastly, we need to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 401, not called at, not called for at committee of the whole, can I have a motion for that, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and lastly, I need a motion to call for this piece of legislation to be read this evening. Amended to step eight, pay grade seven. Can I have a motion for that?
Pay grade seven, step eight.
Step eight, okay, making sure.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we have another request from Jamie Iceman, Director of Public Service and Human Resources, requesting legislation to place Kyle Breiding at pay grade six, step six, for a general foreman, street department, emergency wording is requested. This kind of goes hand in hand, we did kind of discuss this a minute ago, but does anybody have any other questions or comments about Mr. Breiding? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 302, the 10-day rule?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I also need a motion to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 304, not on the agenda.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, thank you, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 401, not called for at committee of the whole. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, a motion to call for this piece of legislation for the first reading this evening.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We need a special for Tuesday, too.
Thank you, Ms. Iceman.
Okay, next up, we have the presentation of the finance report for the month of December 2024.
All right, starting with the health insurance fund for the month of December 2024. The unexpendable funds, well, the revenues for the month was 136,000, expenditures 383,000. Put our unexpendable fund balance just over a million dollars, 1,040,000. Made our net year-to-date negative 763,000, almost 764,000. A lot of that just has to do with, we took two healthcare holidays last year to help balance the budget and use up some of the unexpendable fund balance in that fund. So, we did that, that's the main reason why every time we take a healthcare holiday, it costs about, well, it saves the city about 330, 350,000, somewhere in there. So, a lot of that negative net year-to-date is just because of the two healthcare holidays. Moving on to the income tax fund, our estimates for the month of December was 1,054,000. Actuals came in at just over 1,150,000. Put us over our estimates by about 2.8 million. We didn't have any transfers in the month of December, we completed, well, we did, I should take that back, we did have a couple of transfers that were in the, or the adjustment ordinance at the end of the year. They were 50,000 to general liability, 100,000 to street lighting, to get those funds out of the negative before the end of the year. So, we did have those two transfers, those were completed in the month of December. It left us with a carryover balance of about 2.7 million in the income tax fund at the end of the year. Moving on to the statement of cash receipts and disbursements, a few funds in the negative as we close out the year, all of them are the used funds. Uh, all of them are the used funds where we're waiting, where we have to expend the money, um, and the federal government will reimburse us. The three funds is the city grant fund, that's the sludge, the watering building at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the FEMA fund, which is the flood mitigation grants for, on 14th, 15th, and Arthur, Ian, the dam, uh, at the reservoir. And then the CDPG fund, that's our, uh, HUD grant that we receive every single year. Other than that, those were the three funds in the negative. All the other funds were out of the negative. Uh, looking at the last three months of activity, uh, in the month of December, general fund did go down by about 400,000. A lot of that just has to deal with, we didn't have really any transfers. Uh, once again, uh, we completed our income tax transfer. We did have a transfer of 125,000 that was from the emergency reserve fund to the general fund. I only did that because to stay in compliance with ordinance. Uh, ordinance states that the emergency reserve fund can't have more than $2 million in it. Uh, we were over $2 million, so I had to do a transfer to get that back into compliance with city ordinance. Uh, so that's why I did that transfer. Uh, special revenue funds, uh, that did go down by about 400,000, even without no, without any transfers. A lot of that just has to deal with the encumbrances outstanding. Uh, the encumbrances outstanding, uh, increased by over $900,000. Part of that has to deal with the water line project on Worcester Road West. Uh, as you all know, the, uh, part of that project's going to be paid by ARPA funds. ARPA funds were in the, uh, special revenue funds. Enterprise funds also decreased, uh, by almost 1.9, a little over 1.9 million from last month to this month. Once again, it's that water line on Worcester Road West. Uh, majority of that was being paid out of water funds. So we had those, just those, that big obligation to pay that, for that water line. So all, all other funds did see an increase by about 300,000. Uh, a lot of that has to deal with us closing out the PO at the end of the year for Summit County Health, for our healthcare premiums for the year. Um, so when we take that PO out, we always take it out for probably a little bit more than what we'd need to, um, just, just in case that there's any unforeseen changes, um, throughout the year. Uh, so I was able to close that out, um, and so that put money back into the health insurance fund, uh, well, freed up money in the health insurance fund, and that's why you see that increase of about 300,000. Uh, looking at last December to this December, I should say December 23 to December 24, um, you'll notice the general fund did go up, um, in the unencumbered cash balance. But as I stated previously in these reports, uh, we had a lot more transfers this year. Um, you, you're looking at just about 10 million transfers in '23, um, to over, a little over 15 million, um, in this past year. So while yes, the fund balance did go up, um, transfers also did go up by about $5 million to help with that. Uh, special revenue funds did see a decrease by about 1.5 million. Um, as I stated many times, the ARPA projects, uh, started happening. We had South Ambeurant last year, we had, uh, the Worcester Road West water line. So just a combination of those things getting obligated or being spent, um, drew down the special revenue funds. Uh, enterprise funds, uh, that went down by about 1.2 million. Um, if it wasn't for the Worcester Road West water line, um, that fund, the cash balance actually did increase from last December to this December. Um, it actually increased by almost 350,000. Uh, so if it wasn't for the Worcester Road West water line, um, that probably would be ending similar to 2023, if not maybe a little bit better. And then all other funds saw a decrease by about $322,000 from last year to this year. A lot of that is just doing two healthcare holidays versus one. Um, in the past several years, we've done one healthcare holiday. This past year, we did do two, so that drew the fund down a little bit more. So that's why you'll see a decrease by about 322,000. Any questions?
Thank you. With, uh, no questions from Mr. Flaker, may I have a motion to? I apologize. Accept the finance report for the month of December 2024.
I have a motion to accept the finance report.
Thank you, and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we do have pending legislation, ordinance number 2-2025, presented by Mrs. Gearhart and myself. And we did talk about this during, uh, per committee meeting, this is for the contract between Haas and Staub Architects. This would authorize the mayor or his designee to enter into contract with Haas and Staub Architects for architectural services, for schematic design for the City Hall and Justice Center project. In the city of Barbados, and the cost that to exceed 104,200 dollars in declaring an emergency. Tonight will be the first reading as the legislation to apply for the, um, grant from the Barbados Community Foundation has not been passed yet. Um, are there any more comments on that? You guys can think of, yes, Mr. here.
Did you say you were, first reading on that ordinance for the Haas and Staub?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Because we haven't had, we don't have any information from the foundation.
Right. That's why, um, I.
I mean, I understand that council has to approve all grants, request, and I provided you with the ordinance on that, which goes back to 1997. So.
Um, that's why I did mention in Ms. Gearhart's committee that, uh, if time runs out and we get to three readings with us, we can always pull it if need be, and we'll just have to resubmit. So we'll just see how it goes. So for right now, it'll just be first reading. Um, let's see. I will go ahead and open it up for miscellaneous, um, if there's anything from my committee or other council members. Anything from the gallery? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I like that motion.
Thank you, and a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, we are adjourned at 6:58.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. That concludes our individual committee meetings for this evening. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at, uh, 7:10 to begin our regular legislative meeting.
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started.
There's not enough blood pressure medicine on the market for this one.
It's okay, let it go out. All right, this evening is a regular legislative meeting of Barbados City Council. Today is Monday, January 13th, 2025. I call this meeting to order at 7:11 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by myself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Lord, watch over council and help guide us in our decision-making process this evening. Please be with those in need, be the light for those that are lost, be the reason for those that are struggling. And I say you protect our first responders and that we never forget the 22. Amen? Big baby. All right, clerk, please call the roll. Present.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Easterling?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mrs. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Gerhart?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Present. Approval of the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, December 16th, 2024 as presented. We're playing catch-up. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes? Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, December 16th, 2024 as presented.
Thank you, and Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second the motion for approval of the minutes held on December 16th, 2024.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Griffin to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, December 16th, 2024 as presented. Are there any remarks? All right, again, we're just playing catch-up here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the minutes are adopted. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of the executive session held on Monday, December 16th, 2024 as presented. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session held on Monday, December 16th, 2024 as presented.
Thank you, and Mr. Griffin?
I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Griffin to approve the minutes of the executive session held on Monday, December 16th, 2024 as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the approvals for the executive session are approved. Acceptance of the Financial Department report for the month of October 2024 as presented. Again, this is catching up from the previous year. Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept the finance report for the month of October 2024 as presented.
Thank you, and Mr. Griffin?
I'd like to second the motion for approval.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Griffin to accept the financial report for the month of October 2024. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the financial report for October 2024 is accepted. All right, and again, one last time for catch-up here. Is there a motion to accept the financial report, department report, for the month of November 2024 as presented? Mrs. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept the finance report for the month of November 2024 as presented.
Thank you, and Mr. Griffin?
I have a second motion.
All right, a motion was made by Mrs. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Griffin to accept the finance department report for the month of November 2024 as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so, financial report for November 2024 is accepted. Petitions and claims? Matters requested? All right, citizens addressing council. I did not see any on the sheet when I just checked, so we'll hop right into first reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number 1-2025 presented by Ms. Gerhart. Donation of property, 7015th Street Northwest. An ordinance allowing the city of Barbados to accept the vacant lot at 7015th Street Northwest from Michael Seadee, the owner, as a donation and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. Gerhart. I would like to second... Mr. President, I would like to second Mrs. Gerhart's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Hager to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspension?
Can I call Mr. Easterling?
Yes, you will call Mr. Easterling. He has...
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
All right, motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Ms. Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Greer, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 1-2025.
Thank you, and Mrs. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Ms. Gerhart's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Ms. Gerhart and seconded by Mrs. Hager to adopt ordinance number 1-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 2-2025 presented by Mrs. Gerhart and Mrs. Thompson. Title, entered into contract with Haasen Stab Architects. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designated union to contract with Haasen Stab Architects for architectural services for schematic design for the City Hall and Justice Center project in the city of Barbados. And the cost is not to exceed $104,200 and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading? The second reading will be on January 27th. Resolution number 3-2025 presented by Mrs. Beck. Preliminary participatory legislation Van Buren sidewalk project. A resolution of the council of the city of Barbados authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the improvement of North Van Buren, PID 122321, and nearby area to install and rebuild sidewalk and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Harris to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of Resolution 3-2025.
Thank you, and Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mrs. Beck's motion for adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Harris to adopt Resolution number 3-2025. Yeah, it would. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 4-2025 presented by Mr. Harris. Title, entered into contract Summit County Akron Regional Radio System. An ordinance authorizing the city of Barbados to renew the city's user agreement with the Summit County Akron Regional Radio System, SARS, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mr. Harris's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Ms. Gerhart to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number 4-2025.
Thank you, and Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mr. Harris's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Ms. Gerhart to adopt ordinance number 4-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 5-2025 presented by Mrs. Beck. Title, entered into contract GPD Group Incorporated. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with GPD Group Incorporated, GPD, for general professional engineering services including but not limited to permissive and residential street resurfacing programs, infrastructure improvement, design management, street crack sealing, street striping, and miscellaneous engineering management services and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Harris to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance 5-2025.
Thank you, and Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Harris to adopt ordinance number 5-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 6-2025 presented by Mrs. Beck. Title, 2025 Street Road Sulf Program. An ordinance authorizing the mayor enter into contract with Cargill Incorporated for the 2025 Street Road Sulf Program through the Community University Education Regional Purchasing Council of Governments and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Harris to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance 6-2025.
Thank you, and Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Harris to adopt ordinance number 6-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 7-2025 presented by Mrs. Beck and Mr. Griffin. Title, 2025 bids and contracts years' requirements for materials and services. An ordinance authorizing the director of public service to advertise for bids and/or enter into contracts in 2025 covering the year's requirements for materials and services used in the ordinary and daily operation of the municipal departments in the city of Barbados and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. A motion to suspend, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Griffin to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll... Sorry, clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance 7-2025.
Thank you, and Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Mr. Griffin to adopt ordinance number 7-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
Ordinance number 8-2025 presented by Mrs. Beck and Ms. Gerhart. Title, vacation of portion of May Street. An ordinance authorizing the permanent vacation of an approximate 192 linear feet of May Street starting at the northern parcel line of parcel number 01.04367 and moving south towards Coventry Road.
Most... Are we... We're voting on this tonight? No emergency waiting on that one? All right. Motion to suspend, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Ms. Gerhart to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barbados City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion for suspension carries. Motion to adopt, Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance 8-2025.
Thank you, and Ms. Gerhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Beck's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Beck and seconded by Ms. Gerhart to adopt ordinance number 8-2025. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Gerhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig is absent. Mr. Easterling?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Motion for adoption carries.
The following ordinance was presented in the Finance Committee this evening. It was requested that council invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 302, the ten-day rule, Council Rule 304, the not-on-the-agenda rule, and Council Rule 401, the not-present at the committee of the whole meeting rule. Council Rule 702 was invoked and Rules 302, 304, and 401 were suspended by vote of the Finance Committee. Ordinance number 9-2025 presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title, ... Title, mark car compensation. An ordinance authorizing the city of Barberton to place marked car, street superintendent, at pay grade seven, step eight, and declaring an emergency. This was the first reading. The following ordinance was presented in the Finance Committee this evening. It was requested that a vote that council invoke Council Rule seven oh two to suspend Council Rule three oh two, the ten-day rule, Council Rule three oh four, the not-on-the-agenda rule, and Council Rule four oh one, the not-presented-atcommittee-of-the-whole-meeting rule. Council Rule seven oh two was invoked and Rules three oh two, three oh four, and four oh one were suspended by vote of the Finance Committee. Ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty-five presented by Mrs. Thompson. Title, Kyle Breeding Compensation. An ordinance authorizing the city of Barberton to place Kyle Breeding, General Foreman Street Department at pay grade six, step six, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading. And this ends the first reading.
Right, second reading of ordinances and resolutions.
There are none.
Third reading of ordinances and resolutions.
There are none.
Appointments.
There are none.
All right, miscellaneous and unfinished business. Well, the gentleman that usually... I'm looking for a motion to excuse Mr. Heidig from tonight's meeting. Mr. Harris?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Heidig for this evening's session.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right, Ms. Gerhardt. A motion was made by Mr. Harris and seconded by Ms. Gerhardt to excuse Mr. Heidig from today's legislative meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Heidig is excused from today's meeting. Is there anything from the body? Ms. Gerhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Easterling, welcome to council. I don't think I've ever heard that many roles invoked in one evening, so you've definitely got your feet wet on your first night. I thought Mr. Easterling had a good question, and I was wondering if Jeremy could help us. Jeremy, could you do your best to explain a healthcare holiday?
So, the healthcare holiday, when I refer to a healthcare holiday, a healthcare holiday is where we don't charge the departments or the employees for healthcare for the month. So, it's a holiday for them because they're not getting healthcare taken out. We do it for a couple reasons. Most of the time, it is to help the general fund out, to help balance that budget. Since we're not charging the healthcare back to the departments, it then frees up one month of healthcare off of the departments that are paid out of the general fund. It helps free up some of that money. In the general fund, it amounts to about two-hundred-thousand dollars, right around there somewhere, that it can help free up in the general fund. So, it's just one of those things. We only can do it if we have enough reserves in our healthcare fund, which, at the beginning of the year, of beginning of twenty-four, we had about one-point-seven built up into that fund. It's more than enough. And that's why we were... We did two healthcare holidays to help draw that balance down because it's too much in reserves. So, a way to give it back to the employees because since they're helping fund the healthcare fund is to give them a healthcare holiday to help draw that balance down. So, it's a combination, draw down the balance in the healthcare fund, but also help... It's a method to help balance the budget.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt. Is there anything else from the body? Anything from department heads? I just have one... Well, a couple things, I guess. Ms. Gerhardt tapped on it, but welcome to the Thunderdome, Mr. Easterling. No, there's... But I am pretty excited. I do want to say that all the candidates that applied, I do want to put out a heartfelt thank you to the... That is... That shows a lot of initiative and care for the community.